For October the 2nd, yes, today is Wednesday, but we're still going to have our meeting tomorrow. Our regular public meeting on Thursday, October the 3rd, starting at 6:00 PM. Our first order of business today is Economic and Development Agenda Item 3.1, since we don't have any presentations. Mr. Horn.
Good morning, everyone. Declare a surplus for conveyance to City of Clearwater Community Redevelopment Agency. Certain real property located at 610 Franklin Street. Approve the contract for purchase of real property by the CRA and authorize appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Lane.
Thank you. Chuck Lane, Assistant Director, Economic Development and Housing Department. I'd like to begin by identifying a typo in the agenda narrative for this item. It incorrectly states that the property is 1.85 acres. It's actually 1.085 acres. That'll be corrected for tomorrow night's agenda. The property, of course, is the former site of Fire Station 45. The contract in front of you today is for the sale of the property from the city to the CRA. We had two independent appraisals performed on the property. They came in at 1.85 million and 2 million. The contract sales price is $1,006,000. This amount has been calculated to recoup the city investment in acquiring the property plus interest over time. The city has the latitude to sell the property to the CRA at a price below appraised value. So the purpose for selling the property to CRA is for the CRA to put out an RFP, to attract a developer through an RFP process. We know the site has challenges. The CRA previously put out a call for letters of interest, calling for an adaptive reuse project, and they were unsuccessful. Market rate development at the desired scale and size is impractical, really, because of the location of the property. Staff determined that subsidized housing development is a project most likely to overcome those site challenges. On August 15th, the CRA put out RFP 50-19, calling for a low-income housing tax credit development on the site. The RFP called for a development proposal through Florida Housing Finance Corporation's Low Income Tax Credit Program, specifically through Request for Applications 114. Florida Housing Finance Corporation puts out several RFAs throughout the year. This year, RFA 114 is the most heavily subsidized, so it's the most highly competitive round of applications. Tax credits are awarded to the successful applicant, and the revenue is used to offset construction costs. So the concept behind the program, lower construction costs can be translated into lower operating costs. Property can sustain on lower rents over time. Between the time this agenda item was created and today, staff received and reviewed three proposals. All three were from very well-qualified firms. American Residential Community submitted one. They're just about finished building Madison Point on South MLK near the Nolan. Southport Development, they've completed several projects in Clearwater. Country Club Townhomes, Garden Trail, Woodlawn Trail, which is near completion. And the top-ranked proposal, according to staff, is Blue Sky Communities. Their development concept really set them apart. I'm going to show a rendering that they provided in their application. The monitor's working? Thank you. So you can see it's a very thoughtful and attractive design. It's nine stories in height, 81 units with structured parking. As you know, the site fronts Pier Street. It also has furniture on Franklin Street. The proposal calls for commercial space on Franklin, which is a good way, really, to wrap the parking garage. Total development cost, $22 million. In the RFP, we asked to have an option to fund an additional floor of parking for the public. It's an option that we have. Blue Sky has agreed to that option. It can be difficult to combine public and private parking at times, so we'll have to evaluate that. And if it's feasible, we'll come back with a recommendation. We're looking forward to working with Blue Sky. They have an outstanding reputation throughout the Tampa Bay region, throughout Florida. Sean Wilson, President of Blue Sky Communities, is here today. Happy to answer any questions if you have them. If this item is approved today, there still are some steps to take. At the next CRA meeting on October 14th, the CRA Director will present a companion item for the CRA Board to approve the contract in front of you today. At that same meeting, the CRA Board will be asked to approve a contract for the sale of the property from CRA to Blue Sky. At the October 17th council meeting, council will be asked to approve the minimum local areas of opportunity funding in the amount of $747,000. This amount is required to max out Blue Sky's basis points with their application to Florida Housing Finance Corporation. That money will be in the form of an interest-bearing loan, and it will be split between housing funds, probably federal dollars, and CRA dollars. And with that, I'll take questions.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 3.1? Okay. Mr. Lane, again, explain the concept of this affordable housing. I know that, you know, in other areas, we're talking about market-rate housing to attract young professionals and, you know, that kind of person into the downtown, which should make it vibrant and give it some life and have some discretionary spending dollars. Affordable housing doesn't necessarily connote that type of tenant, correct?
Understood. It's a lower-income category. There's no question. What you have here, though, is it's also workforce housing. These are people that will work in the downtown, will work throughout Clearwater. So it's certainly a contribution to the workforce. As far as the site for market-rate development of housing, it really just, it doesn't work. It's sandwiched by two institutional uses. It's not a desirable site for that type of redevelopment, and that's why we've gone this direction.
Will it have, how long will it have to stay affordable housing?
Fifty years.
Fifty years? Ms. Ekin, were you going to clarify something?
My point of clarification is, on this agenda item, you are not approving this project. The only thing you're considering on this agenda item is transfer of the property from the city to the CRA. And sale of the property from the city to the CRA. This project and its terms and conditions will come before you as CRA on October 15th?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Okay, so my questions are on the line.
It's, this is a discussion time, so you can ask anything you want. I just wanted to clarify that that's not what this item is.
Thanks for that clarification. So, you know, but it is, yeah, okay.
It's where ultimately it would be coming before you, but not in...
Those questions should come to the CRA then. Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hamilton.
Chuck, given our number-one industry of tourism, which is hospitality, which has some lower income positions with all of those people in the area, plus, I wonder, does a, would a young college graduate with student loan debt versus the amount of debt for their student loan versus whatever their job, if they're, you know, in a high-tech job down there, does that come into play in equating as to whether or not they would qualify for this type of housing?
No, the debt, the debt doesn't, isn't calculated. It's a matter of total household income.
Then again, let's remind ourselves, and myself in particular, we're talking about the transfer of the property here, not the use of the property afterwards. Mr. Pogly.
But like the city attorney said, whether it's this developer or another developer, points of clarification on, for me, it's the rent formula. Is there a base rent? How does the formula work? What would, can we determine, would we have a range of what the rent might look like, one end to the other end?
The rents are predetermined in the program. I don't have them in front of me. I'll get them for you. I can present them to you on Thursday. This is decided what will be presented, although, maybe not.
I think that discussion ought to be at the CRA meeting.
At the CRA, yeah.
This is just a transfer.
And I apologize, counsel, I sent us down the wrong road. I'm trying to steer us back onto the right road, you know. The question should be regarding the transfer of the property from the city to the CRA.
Looks great, by the way.
Again, the question is regarding the transfer of the property to the CRA. Okay? Mr. Condon.
Does this have to be, can this be on consent? It doesn't look like it is.
No.
No.
It is because of charter, you're declaring property surplus. It is a public hearing item.
Okay. So we'll discuss the transfer and have it on our agenda for Thursday. Agenda Item 3.2.
Approve a grant of $75,000 in general fund reserves to be set aside as a commitment for the local government contribution that is required for applicants to participate in the state of Florida's Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program for an 82-unit affordable housing development project, Union Trail, proposed by S.P. Pinellas Four LLC, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Lane.
Similar to the previous item, this is also a tax credit project. The subsidy is much lower in this application cycle, so it's less competitive, and it's not in the CRA. The applicant is S.P. Pinellas Four LLC, but the developer is Southport Financial, or Southport Development. As I mentioned earlier, Southport developed Country Club Townhomes, Garden Trail, and are almost that certificate of occupancy with Woodlawn Trail, and that's 80 units of affordable housing in the Lake Bellevue neighborhood. This proposed project is on the south side of Union Street, just east of Highland Ave. Site is about seven acres. There's a few single-family homes scattered on the site right now, but it's largely vacant. Project calls for 82 units of affordable housing. It's considered a family project. It'll be a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. In order for S.P. Pinellas Four LLC to submit an eligible application to Florida Housing Finance Corporation, they must demonstrate local government support, and they do this by, we can do this by contributing $75,000 to the project. That's the minimum contribution. We set aside general funds to make this contribution, to set it aside. However, if the project's successful, we use housing funds to fund that contribution. Questions, please.
Any questions on Agenda Item 3.2? Consent? Thank you, Mr. Lane. Agenda Item 4.1.
Approve the purchase of reconditioned Kale parking meters from Kale America, Inc. of Clearwater, Florida, in the not-to-exceed amount of $460,000 pursuant to the Clearwater Code of Ordinances 2.564-1B sole source and 2.621 disposition of personal property, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Ryder.
Morning, Mayor. Council members. Steve Ryder, Parking Manager. Again, here to get approval for the purchase of 65 multi-space parking kiosks to be used to replace the aging single-space meters on the beach. These kiosks will be programmed with pay-by-plate technology, which will allow us to use the new license plate recognition equipment to enforce the beach area and the lots and on the, on-street parking spaces.
Any questions on 4.1? Mr. Auburn.
Yeah, I was thinking that 65 of these things was for the entire city, but this is just for the beach?
This is just for the beach, sir.
We have 65, I mean, would there be multiple pay stations in parking lots? Is that...
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Hamilton.
What's the difference in price? We're buying reconditioned units versus new units?
We're getting around $1,300 off for the reconditioned units.
And what's the warranty for a new unit?
Thirteen-month.
A new unit only has a 13-month warranty as well?
Yes.
Okay, then that answers that question.
Mr. Pogly.
Thank you, Mayor. The return on investment based on the cost, because I'm guessing operationally, we won't need but one or two enforcement people for those particular 65 meters, correct?
Correct.
I mean, it's a half a million for 65. I'm guessing that we're going to certainly need a lot more of those, correct?
We're going to need less on the beach. We're taking the 65 that we currently have and repurchasing. We're hoping to spread those out throughout the beach and have some leftover that we can use in downtown, so the purchase for the downtown meters should be a little bit less.
Okay, but that takes care of all the beach, then?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
Absolutely.
I wasn't clear on that. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Condon.
Two parts to the question. On the beach, is it just the parking lots, or is it also street parking?
It will also be street parking, so we'll remove the single-space meters and centrally locate these kiosks. We will also create more Park Mobile zones that will just use the Park Mobile app to pay for parking. So we'll be able to spread them out a little bit.
And then, part two, I want to, I want to touch on what Mr. Pogly's just asked. How long do you think it would take, will take, to recoup that $460,000?
I don't have a timeline for that. I can get that to you, but I don't think it will be very long. Again, with the plan that we have talked about previously, I would say within one- to three-year period, I would think.
Thank you.
Mr. Hamilton. Sorry, I think, these parking meter boxes...
Yes, sir.
Are they compatible with Park Mobile, or does Park Mobile only work on a...
They are compatible.
The individual meter?
They are compatible with Park Mobile. So once you put the Park Mobile, you know, that you pay for your parking by Park Mobile in the app, the CalA meter knows. So, and also the Vigilant license plate recognition system that we'll be using also has that in their system, so that Park Mobile and CalA tie into Vigilant so that we know who's paid for parking at all times.
So the Park Mobile app is usable in basically every city space?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Consent?
Yep.
For 5.1.
Approve a claims service contract with Sedgwick Claims Management Services of Nashville, Tennessee, in the not-to-exceed amount of $100,000 for a one-year term pursuant to Clearwater Code of Ordinances, Section 2.564, exempt from bidding, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Rosario.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Good morning. Rick Rosario, Risk Manager. The Risk Management Division of the Finance Department is seeking approval of a one-year contract with Sedgwick Claims Management Services to provide supplementary claim services. This would include adjustment and administration of city liability and property claims. Having our services in place will be beneficial if excessive claims are received due to a disaster or storm or other extenuating circumstances. Risk Management has retained Sedgwick Claims Management Services in the past to fill in for staff shortages, and they provided professional and excellent claim services. This contract will provide Risk Management and the city greater effectiveness and flexibility in the investigative and fiscal management of our liability and property claims. The Risk Management Division is respectfully requesting approval of this agreement with Sedgwick Claims Management Services.
Any questions on 5.1? Mr. Condon.
Yes, sir.
I was sneezing when...
God bless you, by the way.
When I thought you said this company we've done business with in the past.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Sorry to have to have you repeat yourself.
Consent?
Yep.
Thank you.
6.1.
Ratify and confirm an increase to invitation to bid number 19-18 to General Utility Pipe and Supply, Inc. of Trussville, Alabama, for the original annual amount of $1,250,000 to $1,413,000 for the purchase of steel and polyethylene pipe and fittings to include the current contract period of May 1, 2019, through April 30, 2020, and the remaining one-year renewal option, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Langill.
Good morning. Brian Langill, Assistant Director for Clearwater Gas System. General Utility Pipe and Supply was awarded a bid last May in 2018 for our plastic and steel pipe and fittings. Those are all the materials that go in the ground and the right-of-way, and the service lines up to the meter sets that we serve our customers with. There was one item that was not in the original bid last year, and that was the gas meter stops. Those are the shut-off valves at the meter to do maintenance on the meter and to shut off customer accounts as needed. And then there were two other items that were upgraded during the course of the first year of the contract PO. That was the tracer wire, which is the wire that we put in the ground next to the plastic pipe to locate where the gas lines are once they're installed and in service. And then also, we had the gas marker poles, which were upgraded as well, because they were not meeting our operational requirements out in the field. They were breaking, and the labels were not visible after a certain period of time because of the sun and everything. So we upgraded those during the first contract year period. So we're asking you to add in the meter stops to the original bid and asking for the upgrade on these two components, these other two components.
Any questions of staff on 6.1? Mr. Langill, I can understand the upgrade. I'm a little concerned about not having this original in the contract. Where was the oversight?
That was the, when the bid was being developed, for some reason, the staff that was working on it just forgot to put that in the bid item, unfortunately. And that's, and they were ordering those parts. Those are normal parts that are ordered on a regular basis, because every meter that goes out must have a meter stop on it. And so unfortunately, it was an oversight within the department.
Right. We'll have this on our agenda for tomorrow night. Agenda Item 7.1.
Provide direction regarding the Clearwater Sea Blues Festival to be held in February 2020 at Coachman Park. Mr. Dunbar.
Good morning. Kevin Dunbar, Director of Parks and Recreation. We want to bring this item back to you. On April 19th, we did our co-sponsored item, and at that point, we were anticipating the normal level of funding from Visiting Peak Clearwater. Now that their process is completed and they have changed their process, our funding was reduced back significantly, which, for lack of a better word, kind of will change the event some. So we just wanted to make sure that council was aware of that in case there were any concerns. Big thing is, it's going to reduce our talent budget. It's going to reduce our talent budget by close to about 25 percent, so the level of entertainment won't be as great. But we anticipate an operating budget of about $223,000. It's going to be about $139,000. Will be what the change is. The big issue that we've come into is the, the Visiting Peak Clearwater folks have created a process now. You use it just to apply, and you would ask for a certain amount of money. Now there's a process. I know the mayor can probably speak on it a lot better than I can. And so because of our room nights and our attendance, we fall into a category-three process. So instead of about $75,000 worth of support, we're going to receive a $25,000 worth of support. So didn't want the council to be disappointed if they saw a different event than what they're accustomed to in the past, and we have not scheduled any of the entertainment yet. So we just want to make sure that, we told you one thing in April, and it's a little different now. We just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So with that, Chris Cook's here with me. We're available to answer any questions.
Any questions, counsel?
I just...
Mr. Condon.
Is there a chance between now and then that other donors might step forward?
I wouldn't anticipate that. I guess there's always a chance, but I wouldn't anticipate that.
Really not trying to find them.
Yeah, we, at one point, had somebody that went out and solicited sponsorships. That position no longer exists, so we're not actively recruiting sponsorships.
I was going to ask a similar question. You know, I know, like Jazz Holiday and some of the other brands have a, you know, a, you know, presented by, we're not going to go out and look to see if there might be somebody that would at least give you some of that money?
We're always looking. But, you know...
We're not actively doing it.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a staff person specifically dedicated that that's all they're doing, like how Jazz Holiday does.
And Mr. Dunbar, you threw out two different numbers here. The TDC funds, because of the room nights, dropped approximately $50,000, but you said the budget was something like $200,000, and now you're looking at $125,000, and so...
Roughly $140,000. So is, is the, is the, is what we see the drop-off in the, you know, in the budget, from 200,000 down to about 140,000?
Okay, okay. Your numbers didn't compute.
Dylan would have told, so it's probably, probably what I said.
All right.
One question. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Pogly.
So presenting sponsor would be City of Clearwater. We're not going to give top billing to...
Yeah, yeah. That's probably the other thing I should point out, is that, so out of that roughly $140,000 budget, about $85,000 of it is coming from income support from the city, because we've always done this as a free event. I mean, there is some paid seating. There are some vendors and things like that that help to offset the balance of the cost, but this is really an event that, not really, this is an event that is put on by the city, and we've always done it in, you know, kind of that free kind of format in the, in the spring.
Any other questions, counsel? Let's pursue this just for a second. Imagine Clearwater being completed, and, you know, we hear a lot of requests for free events, you know, in the park. This is that type of event, then?
Yes.
And so the cost that would be associated with other similar events that we would put on would be in the range of $150,000, $200,000 each time? Mr. Dunbar?
Yeah, we have a, we have approximately an $81,000 talent budget for this, and then the rest of your costs are, I mean, you fluctuate with your talent budget and some of your marketing. Other than that, I mean, your costs are what your costs are to, in order to open up the venue.
So that each time we would do that with the Coachman Commons area being, you know, I'm looking down the road now, you know, 10 years.
I think depending upon what the finished product is and what we would or would have to bring in to supplement that, you know, the cost would be fairly consistent.
If I may comment on that, Mayor?
Yeah.
I don't think we've really determined yet how we're going to operate the new Coachman Commons, the concert venue. So I think it's going to, the last time we discussed, it would be an open-type situation where we would have possibly three or four vendors. So I'm not sure exactly what the city's role will be in promoting these type of concerts at that point.
No, yeah, no, thank you. What I was saying is that people have been saying, well, why doesn't the city do more events?
Oh, yeah.
And I was just wanting to make sure that we understood and the community understood those events, they may be free, but there's a cost associated with those events.
Exactly.
And it's in $150,000, $200,000.
Well, if you have live entertainment, but maybe the city's not going to be a big producer of these type of events anymore, and the burden is shifted to private entities, which the city will make money on. I think the burden shifts in the future to, like, high-school graduations, community-type events, which this new park will... events, which this new park will lend itself to greatly. So, I'm not sure what that formula's going to look like when we start producing events there.
Yeah.
Because when you bring entertainment and security and all the other components, logistics that go with that, you're right. It's a minimum $200,000 event, so...
It is a $200,000 event, but just want to point out again, the co-sponsored part of this is the city is putting in $85,000 worth of resources.
Right.
Put on the Sea Blues Festival. Now, the rest will generate from other revenue sources, but out of the general fund, it's $85,000 for an event like Sea Blues.
Right.
For two days.
Yeah, for two days. Okay. That clears it up.
I guess, how many, how many events, I'm wondering, how many events that the city sponsors are we looking at doing? My question is, it's a sales position. Do we need to have somebody in a position to market the city and go out into the community and look for sponsorship opportunities for these city events? Is it worth, can that, you know, it's a sales position, working on commission. If you, you know, they go out and generate the revenue, you know, for these sponsorship opportunities, and they get paid. I mean, is, do we need that position?
We had that position, Chris, three years ago.
Yeah.
And it broke, it broke even, and it was very hard to keep somebody in that position because the city, as a rule, does not go out and pay commissions to employees. So, therefore, we have to pay them a salary, and so, we get somebody and get them started. They'd leave and go someplace else. We went through, we went through several people, and at best, we were breaking even. So, we eliminated the position, tried to keep the relationships of the ones that were developed.
We need to look at, I mean, I'm sorry, in the, in the business world, good salespeople make a commission on what, on the work they do, and the better work, better they are at what they do, the more money they make, and the more successful everybody is from it. So, I don't, I don't know why, you know, as a rule, you know, that certain positions should be paid on a commission. I'm sorry.
Mr. Maxwell.
As part of Duncan Webb's report back in April on the amphitheater, he included a model, a financial model that showed, financial and operating models. So, basically, it showed different positions, some of them a sales-type positions. He showed how we would split up the free events versus the sponsored events versus the events that were just a third-party paying us X amount of dollars. We're currently working on that model and trying to integrate it into our system to see what, you know, what that split needs to be between the event types and the revenue streams, what, how we need to tweak it to make it work in our situation. So, that's ongoing currently with Parks and Rec.
I think this is something, you know, as the construction of Coachman Commons continues that, you know, we're going to have to continue to look at. So, it will be discussed, I'm sure, several times in the future. Mr. Horn?
Mayor and Council, it would be very helpful in our conversations for you to communicate to me what your expectations are. You know, are you, the focus is on the outcome. If you want more contribution from sponsorship, if that's a critical component, that you're expecting to provide that revenue to produce a certain number of events on an annual basis, then it's helpful to kind of know that, because then we would then need to structure how we might go about doing that. I mean, that kind of links back to what Michael was saying. I think, Mayor, to your point of looking downstream, it's very clear to me that in some of the things that we do, we're going to have to think a little differently about how we do business. We can't continue to do things the same way, but yet, we've got outcomes that really bump up against the way that municipal governments typically do business. Our rules don't always support some of what is needed, which means, as Pam says, if you're going to, if you're going to do something that's not in the rules, then you need to change the rules. You know, so I think from a, from a planning downstream, we, the more we know what your expectations are, which I think is very healthy, then that, we'll need that lead time to create a set of rules that allows us to lawfully do what we think we need to do. And I think all that's healthy, and I think is something that we will spend more time on with you as we, as we can kind of see what that future looks like. I'll be honest with you, in my mind, you know, providing entertainment, managing an entertainment venue is difficult. We don't have that as core skills within local government. On the other hand, the accountability placed on us as a public entity is pretty high. So, if we're going to be in that business, then we're going to have to do it right and do it in a very accountable way. So, the question is, how do we accomplish that? There is some conversation around, well, are we going to do as many events as people expect us to do? You know, I think that's another, another conversation as well. So, depending on what the, what that workload is and what we're expecting to get out of it, I think that's all healthy conversation and planning downstream.
So, I think we're okay for this year, Mr. Dunbar, and obviously, we'll take another look at it next year after.
We just want to make sure council was aware of the change.
And give us the date of when the Sea Blues is going to be, February?
It's the last weekend of February, the 22nd and 23rd.
Last week, yes, okay. And the date is?
22nd and 23rd of February.
Okay. Thank you. Agenda item 7.2.
Provide direction regarding the construction of tennis court lights for the Morningside Recreation Complex. Mr. Dunbar.
Council may recall, back in March of 2018, the Parks and Rec Board made a recommendation to council to light the tennis courts at the Morningside Recreation Center. At that time, council's direction was, let's see where we're at, at the end of the project, see if there's enough money left in the project to fund doing this. I'm here to report, there is no money left in the project to be able to do that. We have gone out and determined that we've had the lighting designed. It's about $175,000, and it would make sense at the same time to do the basketball court is all part of that, which would be an additional $40,000. So, that's where we, that's where we are at. So, we bring that forward to you for your direction based on the Parks and Recreation Board's recommendation.
Okay, so, explain so that everybody is clear. What we had said initially is that if the Morningside Rec Center budget had extra funds, that we would use that money to provide lights for the courts?
We wanted to look at that as that option, yes.
And there's no extra funds?
There's no extra funds.
So, to provide that funding, we would have to go to reserves?
Correct. I'm assuming, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm just, so that everybody understands where the money would be coming from. And in, when we turned off the lights at all the courts, I think but one or two?
We strategically did three courts in the city, but at that time, we were renovating the Morningside Courts and completely changing the configuration of them, so we did not put lights back up on them. There are, that was about 10 years ago, and so, they have not been lit for 10 years. But, again, your advisory board is making, has made the recommendations, so we just need to provide them back with a response.
And council, I will tell you, because I don't think any of y'all were here when we turned off the lights because of the recession, but, you know, there were a lot of people upset, "Well, you're turning off the lights here, you know, turn them on on this court, turn them on in that court, turn them on for this thing, turn them on for that thing." So, you know, the decision then was that we're not turning them on anywhere. Mr. Hamilton?
Well, I think, I'll try and form this in a question, but Coachman Commons will not have tennis courts when it's done, correct?
They are not currently in the design that's being developed.
Okay. The tennis courts that are down there now are lighted.
Correct, yes.
So, when those courts go away, lighting the courts at Morningside gives us the same quantity of tennis courts lighted at night as we have presently, correct?
Yeah, there are four currently in, at Bayside Tennis Courts.
And how many at...
There are four at Morningside.
So, that's the way I'm looking at it. I look at, if we put lights in Morningside, it gives us lighted tennis courts for the public to use when we remove the lighted courts down in the bay. Thank you.
Where does that put us with the basketball courts?
Well, if you're going to do it, do the basketball court at the level, it's $40,000.
I would, if I may, I'm sorry, if I may, ask a last question. What is the demand over there at Morningside currently? I know the advisory board recommended doing it. How about the basketball courts? I mean, do people have to walk off the courts because it's dark? Is the demand?
There's currently inferior lighting that's there, and so, it would really look pretty haphazard. The, it's, it's a high demand, and one of the reasons is, we're developing youth basketball leagues. And the idea is, they play their games inside, but they practice outside.
Okay. I agree with you.
I do, too.
The question is, I like this idea of transferring one to the other, but there's still the $200,000 worth of cost to do that. Do we put it in next year's budget, or...
Well, if you look at our reserves...
Reserves.
You know, credit goes to staff. We've done a hell of a job building our reserves back up to a fairly healthy level. I know at one time, we were getting real close to, we were in the red zone, but I think our reserves are much healthier today, and $200,000 is not a big bite out of our present reserves. So, I'm very comfortable with it.
I like Mr. Hamilton's suggestion. I think that's a fair, a fair, but, but let me ask the question in terms of, where are we going to have lighted courts now? And where do we not have lighted courts by comparison?
Council may recall the conversation back in March. We have been able to restart all the lighting out on the courts over a period of time because ones that we did not remove, we just turned off. In the case of Morningside, they were, they were removed. So, we have lights where neighborhoods have asked to have lights, and we don't have lights where neighborhoods have asked not to have lights. That was all part of when a neighborhood park was developed. That was how, they were given a menu of options, and one of them was, they were asked, "Do you want tennis courts?" "Yes." "Do you want them lit?" And some neighborhoods said, "No." They wanted, when it got dark, they wanted no activity on the courts. And so, that's what was, that was what was done.
So, so the incremental, incremental cost, you said, I think, was $3,000 to light the courts?
Yeah, yeah. We're moving in the direction now where everything we're doing is LED.
Yes.
And so, there's really not, we don't, do not anticipate a very significant cost.
Well, I think you're hearing the consensus of what we have. The only thing I want us to caution ourselves, you know, council, yes, our reserves have been built up, but that doesn't mean, you know, you spend $200,000 here and $200,000 there, and all of a sudden, you're at $4 and $5 million that you spent on little projects because you have a lot. So, let's not get overzealous in our doling out, you know, our reserves because they're there for a purpose.
Sure.
Okay? You're set, Mr. Dunbar? Mr. Horn, we're okay?
Yes. I think so. I would assume we have to bring, we will have to bring this back, correct?
For the use of reserves, yes.
Yes.
Are you going to bring it back tomorrow or for next meeting?
We can have it ready. You can have it ready, we can have it ready for more, for a budget amendment as well.
Why didn't you do it, why didn't you do it in...
Yeah, we'll bring it back after we...
The next...
We'll bring it back when it's, when we've got it ready.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
7.3.
Approve a license agreement between the City of Clearwater and the Self-Management Resource Center, aim for a three-year period, to provide evidence-based wellness programs for adults. Authorize the city manager or his designee to approve amendments regarding classes offered and locations for classes, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying. Ms. Marsali.
Yes, good morning. This is a renewal of an existing contract that is expiring. This, the original contract was with Stanford University in 2016. We've been offering these programs for three years. They've been very warmly received by the community. The programs include the chronic disease self-management, and we have expanded to the Building Better Caregivers, which is a very popular class as well. And we're delighted to continue this or to continue offering this in the community. This will be another three-year term, we hope, of this contract, and the cost is a licensure cost of just $500. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of staff on 7.3? Consent?
I was just going to ask, if I may, sir, is there a cost to the person who takes the class?
It's a great question. There is no cost to, to the participants that take this class or any of our other evidence-based classes. We have a strident commitment to offer these classes, and that's a key part, to offer them at no cost. So, there is no cost to the participants.
Did you know I've taken, I had a question. I've taken at least one of those.
Yes, you have.
Hopefully, you passed.
I did.
Yes, you did.
Tai Chi for balance.
Consent on 7.3?
Yes.
7.4.
Authorize an agreement between the City of Clearwater and Bureau, and the Bureau of Business Enterprises, Division of Blind Services, for a three-year period with an option to renew for one additional three-year period to provide employees and city facility patrons with snack vending machines, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying. Mr. Lockwood.
Good morning, Assistant Director, Mike Lockwood, Assistant Director for the Parks and Recreation Department. For any of this morning is an agreement with the Bureau of Business Enterprises, BBE, Division of Blind Services, for providing employees and patrons with vending services. Over the past four years, BBE, Division of Blind Services, has provided very successful service. We currently have 15 different locations on city facilities. As you know, vending is about convenience and options, so healthier options is something that we're working with the BBE on, so staff is working with them to provide that option. And sometimes, those healthier options can be a little bit more expensive. So, working with them to try to provide affordable rate for our employees, patrons, and visitors are very important to us. So, with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions on 7.4? Consent?
Yes.
8.1.
Accept the University of North Florida Training and Services Institute, Inc., DBA Institute of Police Technology and Management High Visibility Enforcement for Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Grant Award in the amount of $40,000 for police overtime. Approve the letter of agreement and contract with the University of North Florida and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying. Deputy Paul.
Major Brian Colley with the Police Department. Good morning. Since 2004, the Police Department has conducted six high-visibility enforcement campaigns focused on pedestrian and bicycle safety, and is seeking approval to accept $40,000 in funding to conduct the seventh campaign. The letter of agreement for this campaign is with the University of North Florida, which is the organizing element for the Florida Department of Transportation project. The Police Department will be an independent contractor to the University of North Florida and will conduct education and enforcement details through May 15, 2020. During this time, the Police Department will conduct two public information releases to bring awareness to pedestrian and bicycle safety, and will deliver approximately 535 personnel overtime hours working high-visibility enforcement at locations pre-approved by the Florida Department of Transportation based on current crash data. Those pre-approved locations are currently the corridors of State Route 60 from South Madison Avenue, which is right by State Fire Station 45, east all the way out to Bay Street, which is adjacent to Bayview Park, which is just west of Agbombeath Road. So, it'll be that entire corridor. The second site is Missouri Avenue from Court Street, south all the way to Woodlawn Street, down by Lakeview Avenue. And finally, the third corridor will be Drew Street from Myrtle Avenue, east out to North Betty Lane. With that, if I can answer any questions, Brian.
Any questions? I'm sure not too many people are watching our work session at 9:00 in the morning, but yesterday, I was going over the Memorial Causeway Bridge, and there was a bicyclist coming, facing the traffic. What is the proper lane that the bicyclist should be in, whether he's in a bicycle lane or in a regular traffic lane?
Yes, sir, driving with the flow of traffic on the right side of the road.
Even if he, even if he's in the bicycle lane, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. I don't know that I've ever seen anybody doing that, but it's, you know, it scared me on the causeway. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Consent?
Done with questions, comment? I know it's a work session, but I think this is a great program. I'm glad we're doing it. I think every citizen that has a bike needs to participate in this because especially those corridors identified. And kudos to the department because this is how many years now that we've been doing this?
This will be our sixth year, seventh campaign.
Yeah, that's great. Good stuff. Thank you.
Nine point one.
Authorize the purchase of an aerial platform apparatus from ten eight Fire Equipment, Inc. of Appleton, Wisconsin, in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and miscellaneous tools and equipment in the amount of one hundred and three thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars in accordance with Clearwater Code of Ordinance, Section Other Governmental Entities Bid and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying. Chief Ellers.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Sky Dallas Fire Chief, Clearwater Fire Rescue. The item before you is to request approval for the purchase of an aerial platform truck from Pierce Manufacturing through ten eight Fire Equipment. Uh, this purchase is to replace the current Truck forty-eight, which resides at the, uh, Belcher Avenue Station, which is a two thousand and six model and it will be moved into a reserve status, which coincides with our replacement schedule. With this purchase is equipment associated with this function as a tech rescue unit and ladder company operations, which are hydraulic rescue tools. Um, and also with this purchase, uh, both of our frontline ladder trucks will been, have been replaced, which in two thousand and eighteen, we just replaced the tiller downtown. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on nine point one? Mr. Pogles.
You're gonna place one in reserve. What is the resale value that ultimately will happen on that thing?
Uh, yeah, the, 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 the one that's in reserve now will go to surplus and depending on how the city puts it out there, it's, you know, the value could be, you know, anything. I'm not sure how they, what they're going for.
I mean, how much of the one point four or one point, actually five, do we recover? It was two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand or?
Um, it could be a percent, but I doubt it could be that much. When we get wherever a truck gets, you know, the fire service is really, uh, their, their trucks are pretty bad.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
In other words, we've cannibalized most of the.
That's what I would say.
It's the, uh, it's the, uh, no, it's a great question because, um, we don't treat, uh, because of the way we operate in response. You know, it's just like getting your car every day and starting it from zero and then going zero to sixty and then running that engine to the full potential all the time and then going back and shutting it down for the next hour or so. Uh, so it is, it's, we're hard on equipment just because of the nature of the business.
Yeah.
Mr. Hamilton.
The, uh, you can buy these at surplus, but you have a hard time parking them in your, in your driveway. But, uh, um, the one point, basically one point four million dollars for this piece. This is something that you, uh, budget and almost annually for to build up the, build up the money so that it's there, um, on a recurring basis because we know the lifespan of these, this type of vehicle, correct?
That is correct. That's part of the capital improvement, uh, plan that we've, uh, we, um, you guys, um, voted on, uh, two, uh, I think that go, come up ago in regards to how that looks for the next six years and as part of that penny for.
And when this apparatus is ready for delivery, do we fly, do we fly up to Wisconsin and drive it all the way back? Or how does it, how does that work?
No, we do have a, a committee that goes up there to, to do the final check on it, make sure this is exactly what we, um, specked out and it works the way it's supposed to. They bring it down, uh, the company brings it down. Pierce Manufacturing brings it down to ten eight. We just go down to ten eight, which is located in Bradenton and pick it up there.
Consent?
Yeah.
Nine point two.
Authorize the purchase of personal protective equipment, PPE, from municipal equipment company of Orlando in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-three thousand, eighty-seven dollars in accordance with Clearwater Code of Ordinance, uh, Section Other Governmental Entities Bid and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying. Chief Ellers again.
Again, Sky Dallas Fire Chief, Clearwater Fire Rescue. Uh, this item before you is to request the approval of the purchase of protective, uh, equipment for our personnel, which includes the helmet, coat, pants, boots, gloves and protective hood. The gear purchased meets or exceeds NFPA eighteen fifty-two guidelines, which is the NFPA guidelines on protective gear. Additionally, the hoods that are, we are utilizing these days are the carcinogen blocking hoods, where many departments have gone to, to again, help prevent, uh, some of the catastrophic components of cancer to our firefighters. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the chief on nine point two? Chief, is this replacing all the hoods then or just a?
No, yeah, yes, it's, uh, throughout the, again, same thing because of the nature of the business. We go through gear and hoods just because of the, the exposure of the, uh, fire products. So this is to replace gear that has been used or, um, torn, whatever, as well as for our new employees.
But, but, but you said something that sort of raised a, a question or rang a bell. Um, you said that the gear that we're using now isn't, you didn't say it wasn't up to standard, but it, it might cause some problems? Cancer related.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. No, I, I'm sorry if that came out. So the, the, um, the gear that we utilize right now is, is right to the NFPA standard, meets or exceeds that standard. Um, the, uh, the standard hasn't said that fire departments have to go with this carcinogen blocking hoods, which many departments are going to. It's really an, an option for those departments that can to be able to purchase those. Um, and they're a little bit more expensive than the regular hoods. The, the standard most likely is going to get there in the next several years, but it's not there now. We have already purchased those, um, protective hoods, uh, the carcinogen protective hoods, uh, previously for all our members. Um, I just, just as a hefai for, for counsel is that we do try and get the best equipment we can for that.
So, so, and, and I apologize, I probably misunderstood you, but so the hood prevents carcinogens? And, and all of our firefighters currently have that type of a hood now?
That's correct.
Okay, this is just an upgrade to what they have?
No, this is, this, uh, when, when, what hoods we buy are, are all the question is, we're not upgrading, we already did. This is just, this part of this protective equipment is for those, the new hires that we have. Uh, again, they were gonna get the same hood as all the other firefighters.
Oh, okay, okay.
Additional.
Oh, okay, this is, okay. I, I, I.
I'm sorry.
I really misunderstood that one. Consent?
Yes.
Well, you guys don't help me out any. Just let me go out there. Nine point three.
Approve the lease agreement for the Capitol Theater. Authorize acceptance of the Pinellas County EMS Public Education Grant for the use of the Billheimer, uh, Capitol Theater in the amount of sixteen hundred and five dollars. Authorize fire training officer to execute the grant application. Authorize the fire chief to apply and execute for future Pinellas County EMS Public Education Grants and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying. Chief Ellers again.
Again, Sky Dallas Fire Chief, Clearwater Fire Rescue. This item before you is to request approval for acceptance of the Pinellas County EMS Public Education Grant in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars for the use at the Capitol Theater to sponsor a fall prevention play called Denying Gravity, uh, put on by Sages Theater Group. Uh, and Sages is the Senior Actors Guild and Educational Services. The use of this facility is at no cost, but the required production services, which are security and custodial services, is what the amount is requested for. Sages or, um, Seniors Actors Guild and Educational Theater, um, is provided this public, free public education play for fall prevention throughout the county, uh, to provide awareness for vulnerable populations, which eventually reduces the stress on our EMS systems. Um, the date for the play, uh, is, um, October twenty-seventh at two o'clock in the afternoon, two to three thirty. Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff on the agenda nine point three? Mr. Pogles.
Oh, for, okay, the senior council, um, so I'm glad there's a grant that's paying for this and we're accepting the grant. Because given the fact that citizens of Clearwater heavily invested in the Capitol Theater, I would expect and hope that any type of educational programs our departments have to pay for would be forgiven. And I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Hamilton.
Well, I'm looking, I'm, my, I'm looking at a different thing. This is a one-time performance. Are we able to record, uh, the performance itself? Because it's providing a public service and pub, and information. Can we, are we allowed to, uh, record the performance and put it on the city's website and whatnot for people who aren't able to be in the Billmeyer Theater on that specific day at that time?
I am not sure. I can find out.
I think it's something we should do.
I, I, I agree. The, the, the county has really, uh, from the EMS funds, looked at, again, being proactive and preventing this stuff. And any way we can do that, I think is very, uh, very well received. Uh, but I do not know that specific question and I will find out about that.
Okay.
Not only on our website, but on our TV channel too.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that date is a date that only Mr. Pogles is gonna be here. So, Mr. Pogles, you may want to make a note on your, you may want to make a note of, on your calendar.
That is the.
The twenty-seventh of October?
Yes, October twenty-seventh, Sunday, October twenty-seventh, at two o'clock.
Yeah. Okay. Consent?
Yes.
Ten point one.
Approve fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty purchases of miscellaneous library materials from multiple sources in an amount not to exceed six hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars pursuant to Clearwater Code of Ordinance's Section two point five six four, Other Government Entities Bid or Sole Source and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying. Mr. Parker.
Good morning. Bonnie Potter's Collection Manager with the Library System. Uh, with this funding, uh, we would, uh, purchase materials for all of our Clearwater Library branches. The library would purchase a wide variety of popular materials, including bestselling fiction and nonfiction books for our patrons. The funding would provide access to electronic books on Overdrive, Hoopla, Xenial and Freego platforms. The applications would allow, uh, patrons access to eBooks, downloadable movies and audiobooks from their home through their apps on their mobile devices. We would also purchase children's books and graphic novels for the kids and teenagers to enjoy. The funding also provides for the latest Blu-ray and DVD movie releases, electronic games, audiobooks and CD music. We would also purchase additional formats such as large print books, Spanish language books, magazines, newspapers, reference databases for research, special collections and local history materials. We are members of the Mid-Atlantic Library Alliance and we do receive substantial purchasing discounts through the alliance. Uh, the Malia is a consortium of two hundred and forty-six libraries in the Mid-Atlantic region and many of our contracts are through that alliance. Is there any questions regarding any of the contracts or the?
Any questions on the agenda item ten point one? Consent?
Yes, thank you.
Eleven point one.
Authorize a piggyback of Hillsborough County Contract Agreement two one five two zero eight five one four for the purchase of Neptune Water Meters and original equipment, uh, and original equipment manufacturer replacement parts to Neptune Technology Group of Tallahassee, Alabama, effective November one, twenty nineteen in the annual amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars with option for renewal terms per contract and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying. Mr. Porter.
Good morning, David Porter, Public Utilities Director. I come to you this morning to ask you to authorize the purchase of water meters and water meter components, which are used for our potable water system metering, our irrigation water, uh, metering and also our reclaimed water metering throughout the city and our, and the communities that we serve. Um, this allows us to set the rates or to charge our customers for the services that we provide. Uh, those meters periodically have to be either repaired or replaced and, uh, we, uh, they're lucky to issue the, uh, the PO to Neptune Technologies. You have any questions?
Any questions on the agenda item eleven point one? Mr. Pogles.
Thank you. I have one of the newer electronic meters with a white wire dangling out. It's not hooked up. Are these the newer meters that will allow for?
Someday.
Remote reading?
Yes, one day. Right now, we're not at that point where it's cost-effective for us to do that, but we have provided the new meters the capability to do that in the future if we so desire.
Okay, so these are the new meters that will be able to have that. Do we anticipate a timeframe when we won't have everybody walking around neighborhoods with a stake?
Well, you may remember, we look, I think, I think you were here, Mr. Pogles. We looked at that a number of years ago, about four years ago. The cost was exorbitant at the time. It was over ninety million dollars to implement the program at the time and the payback period was gonna be phenomenal. The technology's changing, as we talked about back then. Uh, the biggest expense is how do you get the data back to the center? Um, hopefully that will change as time goes on, but as we speak today, I don't have.
Well, then, I guess what I would worry about is then we're buying meters that have the technology, they have the capacity for that technology, but will it be outdated when we can afford to actually monitor and assemble and accumulate all that data?
Okay, it shouldn't. And the reason is we aren't buying the electronics, the components that actually connect to the meter. All we're buying is meters that have the ability to send a signal.
Okay.
So that should be good no matter, you know, for the next ten, fifteen years.
So this would be part of the whole package that we need to do and, and hopefully we're.
Right. Now, the rest of it is the receiving devices, the transmitters and all the rest. That, that's the technology that's changing. The actual meters itself now are up to speed.
Okay.
Mr. Kandup.
Thank you, Mr. Ma. I don't remember last year's request. Is it about the same each year that, that we're spending on, on new meters?
It, it goes up and down, you know? And, and the reason for that is there are sometimes a, a growth spurt where we have quite a few new customers come into the system due to growth. Um, there's other times when we have a, a batch of meters that have reached the age where they need to be replaced. Um, and then there's other times when the parts demand is higher because we're, we're midterm rebuilding the meters. So it does go up and down.
If I could have a follow-up question, sir. Do the customers end up paying for this?
Well, ultimately, yes. I mean, everything that we do in Public Utilities is funded by the funds that our customers provide us for the service that we provide. So ultimately, yes.
Any other questions, counsel? Consent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Twelve point one.
Authorize award of invitation to bid number thirty-five nineteen, Citywide Copy and Printing Services to Printing Depot of Osmar, Florida and Minuteman Press of Delray Beach, Florida and the utilization of Pinellas County Print Services, Pinellas County Clerk of the Court for an annual not to exceed amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with option for two one-year term extensions and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying. Ms. Castelli.
Joelle Castelli, Public Communications Director. Um, this item is to cover our quick copy services and printing of brochures, posters, flyers, business cards, envelopes, those types of things. Um, the only thing it does not include is the city's magazine. It also includes memorandum, memorandum of understanding that we have with Pinellas County to use their print shop. Um, we had several responses and, um, these two contracts plus the memorandum of understanding are for two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, I've also brought, um, the two graphic artists who work on all of our projects that make the city look great and create those brochures and, um, flyers and business cards to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of staff?
She said two fifty, so that a hundred is for the two graphic artists. And Mike, I did not get logged in, so I didn't get to open the.
No, that's just the printing. The printing services for the city are two hundred and fifty thousand a year. So that is between all three vendors is two hundred and fifty thousand a year.
Let me put those on. Does that say three fifty? What am I missing there? Mine says three fifty.
Two fifty.
Two fifty. Oh, never mind. I'm still on eleven point one. So that's a three. No, I, I even checked it off, never mind. Sorry about that. Well, look, see? Yeah. That's what I was reading.
That's okay. That's all right. We believe in. I, I'm trying to figure out how to ask a question. What I found, since you mentioned business cards.
Correct.
Uh, counsel, I don't know if you've run into a problem, but on the business cards that we have now, we cannot write on them because they are glossy. And I don't know whether we ought to take a look at redoing them in the future so that, because I like to write on the back and I know a lot of people do, so it's something that, you know. I, I'm trying to figure out how to ask that as a question.
Have we looked into changing the design so you can write on the back?
Well, I'm not saying change the design, I'm just saying.
Well, we have. So the answer is yes, we have, and we've looked at reversing it so that it's, um, the white paper and the information is in blue ink and not using a gloss so that you can write on the back of the card stock.
And, and that would be cheaper?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, okay. There, there was my question. Okay, thanks.
It's cheaper stock.
Okay, yeah.
I'm guessing.
All right. Uh, consent, consent on twelve point one?
Yeah.
Thanks. Thirteen point one.
Approve the purchase of vehicle parts for heavy and light duty vehicles and equipment of. In the fiscal year budget, nineteen twenty fiscal year budget, per the pricing terms and conditions of the following contracts, sole source vendors, specialty parts vendors and other vendors in accordance with Clearwater Code of Ordinance's Section two point five six four, Other Government, uh, Entities Bid for a not to exceed total of one million, five hundred thousand dollars and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying. Mr. Cons.
Good morning, Prell Cons and Fleet Manager. This request consolidates the authorization to utilize the properly sourced piggyback contracts and sole source vendors listed below.
Any questions on 13.1? Consent? Thirteen point two.
Approve a contract purchase order to Communications International of Delray Beach, Florida, in the amount of $397,516.95 for the maintenance and repair of the citywide two-way radio communication system and equipment. The purchase of additional equipment in accordance with Section 2.564, 1B Code of Ordinances, sole source, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Wilson.
Good morning, Council and senior staff members. I'm Charles Eric Wilson, Radio Communication Manager, General Services. This contract renewal authorized Communication International to provide preventive maintenance, repair, and/or replacement of the city's two-way radio and terminals. The term of this contract renewal is one year from October 1, 2019, through September 30, 2020, and includes demand services, emergency services, and preventive maintenance. The cost for this service is $18743.58. The city is also purchasing and installing two Z-tron Max dispatch centers related to installation hardware and services for the city's new emergencies operations center at Fire Station 48. This facility provide a backup radio dispatch system during events that require the evacuation of the main police station at 645 Pierce. The cost of this equipment and installation is $209,773.37.
Any questions on 13.2? Mr. Poglyes.
Welcome back. I mean, I've been around a while. It's good to see you. These, did I hear you say will be compatible with a police station? That's compatible with all of the new updated radios that the police station has? So this brings the rest of the city up to speed so that everybody's on the same?
Well, this is, the second piece is, this is the Z-tron system. In case we have to shut down police station, you have to move to the ELC. They have consoles to be able to dispatch to all policing.
Okay.
Any other people that need to come in.
Okay. Good, thanks.
Consent?
Yes.
Thirteen point three.
Authorize the purchase of vehicles, heavy and light duty, and equipment as approved in the 1920 fiscal year budget for a not to exceed amount of $9,096,700, per the recommended contracts in accordance with Clearwater Code of Ordinance, Section 2.564, other government entities, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute the same. Mr. Johnson.
Good morning, Mayor and Council Brian Johnson, Assistant Director of General Services, Hollowest and General Services. The item before you requests authorization for the purchase of equipment and light and heavy duty vehicles. It includes the replacement of existing vehicles and equipment as well as new purchases. All items will be purchased through approved competitive procurement processes. These funds represent a decrease of just over 144,000 from your FY 1819 budget. Your approval is recommended, and I will take any questions.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 13.3?
One quick one. And again, I haven't been around a little. How long has Fleet Manager, Fleet Services, all this stuff been under solid waste? Is that, is that, how long has that been like that? Has it always been like that?
Right about 10 years, I believe.
Has it been? I guess I was there then. I realize. Never mind. Thanks.
Any other questions, Council? Mr.?
How many years do we get out of a, like a, a garbage truck, that kind of thing? Is that?
It will run anywhere from six to 11 years depending on the type of vehicle.
Okay.
I think I would say average around seven or eight.
Seven or eight years? Okay.
When we switch to natural gas vehicles, did that, that extend the life? Did, did it?
We're still, we're coming to the end of that first round of purchases, but I would say yes.
Yeah.
We're just coming up on being prepared to surplus our first generation of CNG vehicles. So don't have a definitive answer just yet, but I, I would say yes, it has extended the life.
Consent on 13.3? Thanks.
Thank you.
This call Agenda Item 14.1.
Appoint one member to the Parks and Recreation Board to fill the remainder of an unexpired term through May 31, 2022. Council members in your agenda packs, you had applications for three individuals, Patrick Rafferty, Meg Taylor, as well as Scott Thomas. I would like to note that Mr. Thomas, if he is selected, he is currently a candidate running for council, so if he were to be elected, he would have to be, he would have to resign from that position.
I would, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would.
Mr. Hamilton.
I would nominate Mr. Rafferty to the position. He's a Citizens Academy grad, specifically asked for Parks and Rec consideration. I, I think Meg Taylor has a, has a great thing, but a lot of her background is more in the art thing, and I'm hoping we'll be able to find a place for her on the, the art boards, but I think Mr. Rafferty would be very good on the Parks and Rec.
You're all comfortable with Mr. Rafferty on consent?
Yes.
Okay. And I would agree with Councilman Hamilton. Meg Taylor's a motivated, enthusiastic citizen who loves the city, and we need to hopefully consider her on the next slot for our boards.
Agenda Items 15, so we'll put that on consent, Ms. Call?
I'm sorry?
On consent, Mr. Rafferty?
Yes, thank you.
15.1 through 15.9, 15.10 are either second readings or continuations of what Ms. Aiken wants to clarify. Well, 15.8, 15.9, and 15.10 are going to be continued?
We need to talk briefly about those.
Okay. So let's do 15.1 through 15.7 are second readings. Any questions on 15.1 through 15.7? Okay, Ms. Aiken, 15.8.
15.8 will not be continued. That one, I believe we will have second reading on. You will need a third reading on that at the same meeting where there's second reading on the next two. So 15.8 is not a continuance, it's a second reading.
15.9?
Continued.
Okay, and 15.10?
Also to be continued.
And the reason they're being continued is?
So that we can, those are the ones that we amended the title on first reading, and the annexation amendment of title, we actually took a piece of property out.
Took a property out.
So we have to have a second and third reading on that one, and we'll hold off these, the second two, and just have a second reading when the third reading of the annexation is done.
Okay. Any questions of the city attorney on those? All right. 16.1, Mr. Horn.
16.1. Oh, Magic Clearwater, yes. I had an older version.
There you go. Same answer.
Mr. Delk.
Thank you. Michael Delk, Assistant City Manager. Let's, I'll kind of walk you through a real, a brief little update here of where we are. Some of our individual projects, the library. We actually, last week, had a meeting in the Building Department with the architect from Williamson Dakar, looking at a draft of the construction drawings, so that, that seems to be moving forward pretty well. I think probably this is, I would say this will, continues to be what I would anticipate is the next construction permitting for us, certainly, you know, shortly after the first of the year. The Engineering Department is proceeding with the, the selection of the construction manager at risk for managing both the, the Coachman Park redevelopment as well as the library project. On the bridge lighting, we got an update from our consultant on the bridge lighting, which is referred to as the Memorial Causeway Dynamic LED Lighting Project. Lochner Consulting has submitted the Taskwork Order for Design to Engineering. Coordination is occurring with regard to the lighting controls and mounting locations under the bridge. It does appear as though we can use the existing fixture location, replacing the, the bulbs with LED, so they'll become much more efficient as well as programmable. So we're, right now, the staff are looking at a variety of examples and links to other bridges with lighting to assure, ensure an appropriate design. Once the notice to proceed is issued by engineering, which should occur at any time now, the design of deliverables, deliverables will take about 190 days to complete according to our consultant. So they continue to coordinate with FDOT and the U.S. Coast Guard for the lighting parameters of that. So what I would anticipate is that this is a project that we can start to consider in the, the next or coming budget year for implementation. The park redevelopment itself, the STAN-TAC team is continuing to design the, the green and hardscape areas of the park. We're reviewing the design of the park for the activation component, which is the proposed Coachman Commons Light and Sound Experience that we talked to you about last month. Again, the manager, construction manager selection is to occur in November. We'll bring that item back to you for your selection. The park and civil schematic design, 30% plans will be submitted for city review on the 15th of this month, so I would expect that somewhere towards the end of, end of October, we'll be scheduling some public outreach with our community. I really want to try to reengage them in a concerted effort at this 30% drawings stage. In terms of the, we kind of separated it out as we discussed with you earlier prior to the summer, the architectural components. We have reviewed the initial design of the council-approved proposal for the amphitheater. Advocates for the amphitheater believe the proposal is the minimum needed for suggested talent and schedule demands. I mentioned that to you because I had, at one point, talked to you about the phasing of that. So, you know, I think frankly, the, those who propose the amphitheater design to you are less, believe less strongly in the ability to successfully phase the project and still achieve what they believe to be an appropriate level of activity for the amphitheater. So we're, we're working through that. What I've asked the STAN-TAC team to do right now is to, based on this proposed amphitheater scenario, really kind of nail down the operational and requirements or impacts of the, the amphitheater. So we'll be referring to some of our consultant work on that. I think, you know, Webb talked about the level of activity at 40 events and what the impact of the park is. So what I've asked STAN-TAC and the team to do is to really show us at this stage, 30%, how we will manage the, the ticketed events and what that level of activity means for the impact on the operational characteristics of the park. You know, there, the, the selected venue, which you have chosen in April, is a very comprehensive operational scenario. It's, there's an expectation with those kinds of improvements about having a level of activity associated with it that is substantial. And so I feel strongly that we need to, we need to bring you what that operational scenario looks like in terms of the impact of the park. So we're working on that. Those are part of the details that are critical to the architectural design. I want to say that the, the proposed redesign of the bridge connection, I know that's very important to you. I really like from a, a kind of creative design approach what STAN-TAC has come up with to make that connection from the north bluff walk, bluff walk to the south bluff walk. I don't think it will mitigate entirely the concerns of the Waters Edge folks. I met with them a couple of weeks ago for, you know, really a good two hours at the Waters Edge building with them, and I think there's concerns about that, but they have not seen the current design. So when we, again, when we take this back out to our community at the end of the month, and they're going to be able to show them a, a design that, it will not eliminate their concerns, but I think it, it clearly is, is moving in the right direction to minimize impacts on Waters Edge. So we'll have the benefit of a much more thoughtfully designed level of detail, given that we're at 30% now rather than the 10 or 15 that we were earlier. So hopefully, that'll be something that they will recognize as an attempt to, to address their concerns, even as I've expressed to them our intent to, to make the connection north to south. The architectural schematic designs for the 30% for the, again, the architectural component of this will be submitted. It's about two weeks behind the, the park infrastructure itself, so we'll be getting that around the end of the month. And again, I plan on including this with our public outreach and engagement as to, to kind of show you and the community what the, the amphitheater scenario looks like. The HRNA market scan, this is very near completion. We've got actually a phone call with HRNA, the team, this weekend through Skype. We'll be going over the market analysis with them. They are looking at, with, in conjunction with Wannamaker Jensen, assessing the impact on the block property valuations and marketability based on the adoption of the, the amphitheater or Ruth Eckert Hall model venue, which you all adopted in April. So we will, we'll have that to talk to you when we go over the, the whole scenario of the park at the 30% level. That concludes that. I think, just in summary, I think 2020 is expected to be a big year for us. I think we'll have a number of projects, the library and the park, getting under construction. At the same time, we will be finishing up the Seminole Ramp. I think it's easy to kind of lose sight of that, but that was and is the first key component of our ULI implementation. So the Seminole Ramp area is wrapping up the majority of that actually sooner than we had anticipated. We're getting ready to, we'll be issuing permits for the bathroom facilities. We're, we're going to have a couple of, you know, restroom facilities, very modern, very expensive. It costs a lot to build restrooms in a high-hazard coastal zone and raise it all above the floodplain, but we will not have to have porta-potties at our Seminole Ramp area anymore. That comes at a cost, but it is a long-term, forever solution to a, a real maintenance and aesthetic issue for us. So I think we'll find it to be worth it. The park is coming together, I say the park, the ramp is coming together very nicely, and I would like to ask, Mayor, would you like to have a ribbon-cutting kind of event for that when we're at an appropriate place? Or would you just like to let it welcome the public on its own? I'll be happy to, we'll, we'll plan whatever Council would like with regard to that, but I think it's time to start thinking about that.
Well, Council, I, I think that since that was something that we had decided to incorporate in the original discussion of the ULI, that we ought to have some sort of a celebration, you know, part of it, because, you know, we are not just looking at the Coachman Commons area, we're looking at, you know, the entire North Marina District. The, the Coachman Downtown District is, is working together and, and improving each other. So I, I think, yes. You know.
I think that would be a good thing, yeah. We're generating some energy in that, that north of downtown area. That's our no-dough.
Yeah.
You know, it's, we're getting a lot of good interest and energy up there, so this is a good opportunity.
You need dough for no dough.
That's right. Lots of dough.
Well, no, not lots, just, just some. So, so y'all can go ahead and.
All right, absolutely. That's, that's it, unless you've got any questions.
Mr. Hamilton?
One of the last things you said, Michael, I, I, I just have to wonder about building public restrooms at the, at the boat ramps. No problem, no problem. But having to build them to flood, raise them to flood, out of flood level, where is the logic in requiring that when that boat ramp and that area is not going to be being used in a high-hazard weather event? I mean, and it's, it's just a public restroom. It's not a, you don't have lots of materials, everything else. It's all hard materials. It's, it's everything else. I mean, it wouldn't hurt a public restroom to get flooded. Yeah, why the heck? It might help clean it up. I'm just wondering why, where the logic is, having to go to the expense to rise, raise it above a certain level. It's, and it's an extra cost, and, and what, where's that requirement come from? And where's the logic for it?
You know, I think FEMA or flood insurance. You know, I think FEMA or flood insurance. If you look at the Bel Air ramp, the restroom, the facility there, same exact thing. In fact, ours is really kind of modeled on, on that. And you have to provide accessibility as well, so don't forget.
It's the same level of government that requires us to put an elevator in our lifeguard station, you know, in case our lifeguards need to use the elevator instead of being able to walk up.
I would have said build restrooms at grade and don't worry about ensuring the structure.
Any other?
Mr. Pogley?
Thank you, Mayor. I received a call from a citizen, Ed or Michael, either one of you, that the lighting is there in anticipated timeframe and the lighting at Seminole boat docks will be up and ready and running.
I've seen the new fixtures, so I don't know if they're on at night or not.
Somebody called and said they still aren't on, so I.
They're in play, I don't believe they're on yet. I'd have to check with engineering and the inspector there. I'm not sure that they're, everything else is in, so they'll turn all that power on. Some of the restroom power is tied to all of that, too, and there's some, that's going to be elevated as well, those power terminals. So maybe we can get back to you on that.
Great, thanks. And then going back to the, the entertainment venue, the, we had a great discussion yesterday, and operational impacts of that entertainment venue, I think are going to be important. I still 100% full support of the entertainment venue. But first and foremost, this was a community design. It was, it is the citizens' park. So I want to make sure that the consultants, when they come forward, because I know we talked about technology and, and downpointing speakers and that there's technology and lighting, all of the, the, you can now do this with minimal, I, I don't want to, because you and I spoke that if we do, and I think 40 is a high number, given the, how many shows we do now, how many the city produces, how many Ruth Ecker Hall currently produces, if we go to a 25-show schedule, that, and you had mentioned something that the park, because of the shows, would be down maybe 140 years, not accessible to the public. That is something that I don't think would be acceptable. I think that because of all the, all of the community components, the splash pad, the walk, all of that stuff still needs to be operational and open and accessible to the public as we go forward, regardless of how many shows, if it's 25 or 40. So I, I hope the consultants are, I didn't quite get that from the presentation. I want to make sure that that's something that's being considered.
That's, that's, I asked the consultants within the last couple of weeks to look at exactly that. I mean, we're at the point where we have to pull this together, assess the impacts, how we're going to secure it for ticketed events. What parks, what portions of the park are, you know, kind of gated off for the, the events? What, if any, can remain open? How do we secure that? Also, that's a, obviously, that's a police and fire scenario as well, how to secure the, the area, still allow access to the boating public, who has their boats at the marina. So what I've asked them to do is to look at those logistics now. So we're far enough along, we should be able to do that.
Well, and that was a part of the design, too, because of the grade, and we had talked about just, we wanted a minimum two- or three-foot wall with shrubs to be able to provide some type of security. These are discussions we had, all with the intent to still make the park accessible, for the most part, for the citizens.
Well, very true, very important. And, you know, there's a reason that Ruth Ecker was such a strong advocate for it. We know they're not going to be sole operators, that's not going to happen in the park, but there's a level of, there's an expectation about level of activity from a $14 million, you know, event structure. So the Webb estimated that at 140 days roughly of impact on the park. That's a little over one out of every three days. So I, I want, we need to make sure you understand what those operational logistical impacts are. And, you know, I want to, you know, I want to do a thorough job of trying to bring that to you. So that's, that's what we're working on, and your, your point is exactly.
Okay. Mr. Horn?
Yes, Mayor, Council, I, I just, here's my nightmare. We, we don't design a park to be miserable. That we, we are trying to, we're trying to meet a lot of needs, but practically speaking, we may not be able to completely do that and have a park that functions in a reasonable way, the way we want it to function. So just think about what we're, what we're talking about. We're talking about a park that at some point in time will have some level of entertainment that will be categorically different than the other activity that's in the park. So you're going to have multiple groups accessing the park who have an expectation that they're going to enjoy their experience. So we have to, we have to think about how reasonably we can do that. Otherwise, we will design a park where everybody is miserable, because nobody is going to enjoy their experience, because, because we've integrated so much stuff to be occurring at the same time. And we can't reasonably separate it. So that's what I'm thinking about, and I think, I think Michael is right on track. We want to, we want to fully disclose to you, this is what we're doing. And then if we need to make some tweaks, you all can give us the guidance to make some of those tweaks. Because I think it's going to be really challenging to create or isolate some of these things, especially if we have an entertainment venue that's at the heart of it, that is going to be going through a blast. I mean, I'm just.
Well, a part of the conversation I had with Michael was that, you're right, it's, for the rest of the year, when we're not doing the events, it's going to be total, total great for the citizens. You won't have that interaction. So a reasonable, comfortable interaction, and I told him from my perspective, I wasn't worried if people are somewhere in the park and they're hearing a free concert, they're moving, look, the name act that you bring in here, okay, that will dictate, they want a seat in the amphitheater, the entertainment venue to see it, then that's fine. But we're not going to be, that should not be our concern, that people are going to be, because you will be able to hear it, even with new technology, you'll be able to hear it. Well, that's something that is, is not going to be negotiable. Okay, if you're in the park, you're going to hear that music. Sorry to all the promoters, sorry to Jazz Holiday, they're going to hear it, whether they're on the New East Gateway Walkway, and if they can, if they congregate there, we have secured any, we'll move them along, there's safety issues and there may be another community event there. So that is not a concern of mine, but a comfortable interaction commingling for, if it's 140 days, okay. But miserable is the key word. It can't be miserable for all parties involved. So I think it can still be profitable, the city can make money with the current strategy, and I'm looking forward to the organizational impacts as we go forward and seeing how this might work. And again, who's going to promote, how, those are questions we knew would have to be dealt with and answered. So I'm looking forward to these continued next phases.
Important discussion.
Mr. Kandov?
Am I assuming correctly, you were talking about the 29th of October. It's, it's something that's going to be presented to the city. Is that to the public, or is that the?
The consultants are going to provide us the 30% architecturals on the 29th of October. They're about two weeks behind the, the park design itself. So once it comes to us, they're going to, they're going to provide us 30% drawings and expect us corporately to review it at 30%. And then within two weeks, give them comments back. So they will be expecting our comments on the park design itself in two weeks or around the end of October. They'll be expecting our comments on the architectural 30% at the, in, or middle of November, about two weeks. What I intend to do is to work to, during that time period, about a month or so, take the entire project to our community and engage our citizenry on the 30% level of drawings.
My question is, are you going to come to us, council members, first before it goes to the community?
I hadn't thought about that. It's a good question. We'll, we'll.
Last year, that didn't happen, and we, we lost many, many, many months.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll work out that scenario of how to, how to, how to do that, update you. I mean, certainly the one-on-ones we would do, but we can have a public discussion about that as well. So I'll, I'll work on that, and we'll decide how to handle it.
A couple, do you have anything? I'll get started then. I'm, I'm hearing something that makes me miserable. And that is that every three days, a large portion of the park is going to be closed off. And we don't know for a fact that every day is going to be a Jazz Holiday-type event at the park. And that should not be our expectation. So we're going to have to wade through this to figure out whether this expense is going to be worthwhile. We were told that we're going to have big events every three days, but I think we're coming to realize that that may not be the best use of the park for the public. And so as we go forth with this, let's keep in mind how that type of use of the park every three days, closing off a portion of it, you know, what that impact is going to be to the overall park.
I'm not sure that, I'm not, I'm not sure I follow you on the one of every three days. I think it was, what they said was, each event will take, have a three-day effect. And if we have 40 events, that's 120 days, but it's not every three days there's going to be an event. But there's also, the way I envision it, you're going to have a day before the event for setup, a day after the event, breakdown. But while that's taking place in the central part of the park where the amphitheater is, the other part, other than the day of the event, the other parts of the park should be accessible. And I don't know why they wouldn't be. We need to come up with a, we need to come up with a, a system where that's, where that works. And then even on the day of the event, if the event's at, you know, in the evening, during the day, the park should still be open, and we should be able to close the park down at a certain time, clear it out to let the people that are coming to the event have access. Those are all logistics that I think we can work out, but I'm not, I don't envision 150 days out of the year, nobody having access to the park. I've never.
Well, to, to a portion of it, to a portion of it, I would think that it would, it would have to happen. I don't know.
I think Councilman Hamilton described that very reasonably. I would concur with that. I think that my, I think goes back to the bigger discussion, that is what I want to be able to have a discussion with you about. I think the answer is no, the park is not going to be closed entirely three days, but it's the pre, the day of the event and the post-events that have an impact, operational impact on the park. I simply want to, for us to determine logistically how that's going to work and be managed, and then show it to you.
Well, I, I'm agreeing with what Mr. Pogley said in that, you know, there will be other parts of the, of the commons area that's going to be open, but the largest portion is the green area where the amphitheater is going to be. And if I heard you correctly, you're going to have to close that down for setup and whatever, and it's not going to be accessible.
Well, we need to understand how we're handling ticketed, secured events. That's correct. We need to understand that.
And, and that's what we need to be, you know, if we're expecting all of these events to happen, and they're going to be ticketed, and, and the common, the, the green area is going to be off-base, then how does that really impact the rest of the park?
Well, again, you know, logistically, I'm not, it's not my, it's not my strength area, but I would think when you're preparing for a concert, the prep is all going to be centered around the structure itself. The green itself, the green lawn, why can't somebody be laying or playing on the green lawn while they're setting up the day before a concert? Or even the day of a concert? If, if the concert's not till in the evening, why can't somebody be on the lawn during the daytime? Because we're not going to be setting chairs up back on the lawn. Lawn is for.
And we're not running superstructure anymore. Everything is going to be there on the stage.
All the work's going to be going on back to that area. So I don't know, I just think it's something we're going to have to work our way through, but I don't see it having as much conflict as, as other people are envisioning right now.
And the green is just a big grass. I mean.
But, but it's not because it's going to be off-base.
Not all of it.
And it's not going to be grass, it's going to be artificial turf.
We have, we have an excellent consultant team, and we're going to bring you and answer these questions, rather than, because.
No, but all I'm suggesting is, you know, we need to be aware of these things and, and start thinking about, because it's not, you know, like Mr. Horn said, and like each one of us, you know, everybody's expectations are all over the board. And, and people are not, you know, some people are going to be very satisfied, and some people are going to be very disappointed. And we're going to have to be able to provide those kinds of answers to be able to make this successful, not just for one entity, but for the entire community.
Exactly.
Mr. Kandov?
I was just going to say, is not the green four acres out of 22 acres? And I don't see why that, that green can't be isolated when there's a concert and the rest of the, rest of the park be open for whoever wants to come. And sure, they'll hear, hear the music, but they won't see it, you know?
And in some fashion, that may be how we manage it. So I think this is a major facility, it has operational logistical impacts, we just simply need to make sure that we understand how that's going to work.
And Council, let's make sure that we're all on the same page on this. Have we officially changed the name to Coachman Commons?
No.
No, okay.
You, you have authorized us to take a proposed name change to the Parks and Recreation Board for their recommendation back to you.
Okay. Okay, so, because I've, I've stopped using Coachman Park and started using Coachman Commons, I'm a little ahead of myself again.
It's kind of catchy, though.
Yeah. Anything further for Mr. Delt? Ms. Aiken?
Mayor, I think you're probably correct to do that, even though we haven't officially changed it, because remember, Coachman Park only refers to that small northern corner.
Okay.
And you're talking about the entire site. So the rest, that site doesn't have a name.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The, Mr. Horn, do you have anything further for us?
No, I do not.
Ms. Aiken?
No, sir.
Okay, council discussion on the city attorney evaluation and city manager evaluation. Ms. Colton, don't we normally just do that on Thursday nights, right?
Yes, the council rules requires it to be on the agenda today.
Right, okay. No, I just want to make sure that we won't have any discussion of that, you know, now, okay? So then we'll move on to 17.3. Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. All right. I'm trying to figure out where to start this whole thing. We've all seen the pictures, and we're all aware of, of what's going on at the airport as far as, over the years. And I'm not, I'm basically, I'm looking from today forward. What's happened in the past, you know, be it right, wrong, or indifferent, how we got to where we are and it got to where it was, I'm not casting blame or, or anything. I'm just saying, airport hangars, you know, our tenants out at the airport, you know, they rent a hangar. That hangar is there for airplane, their airplane purposes, no problem. It's not a, it's not a personal storage unit. It's not, you know, and, and anything in that hangar needs to be aviation-related. I got no questions about that, no qualms with that. But given our atmosphere and our, our climate and everything else here, some of our, as we've seen, some of our tenants have, you know, decided over time, you know, because of requirements in the aviation industry and everything, of record-keeping and everything else, you know, they decided, you know, they wanted to have a little bit more comfort in their hangar while they had, while they were working on their reports and, and, or if they're in there working on their aircraft itself, you know, a place to cool off. So they've built small offices and put some, you know, wallbanger air conditioners and things of that nature in. Well, it wasn't built to code, it wasn't that, once it became common knowledge, you know, the city is saying, if you want to have that amenity in your hangar, you've got to build, you, you have to come to the city, we got to issue, you got to bring us your, your plan, we got to issue a permit, you have to build it to code. I've got no problem with that. But what I'm saying, what I think is, again, just because of. But what I'm saying, what I think is, again, just because of where we are and the humidity and the, you know, our weather and everything, it makes perfect sense to have an area in a hangar for the tenant to be able to comfortably do the things that they're required to do to fly an airplane, keep records and that kind of thing. So we're asking them to go to the expense of, you know, building to code their office space in their, in their hangars, those that want it. Now personally, I can see where every hangar going forward and in the future, you would want that amenity in the hangar and as part of, part of thing. Ultimately, anything that gets built to, even built to code, when that tenant leaves, we own it. It belongs to the city. That improvement belongs to the city. So what I'm saying is, or what I'm asking is for consideration that these people that are going through the expense to build this office space into their hangars up to code, I'm not saying a dollar-for-dollar consideration, but I'm thinking, I'm wondering if we shouldn't be giving some consideration to a reduced rent to reimburse them for a portion of the expense that they're incurring to build these amenities that ultimately belong to us as the owner of the facility. It is, I mean, we're, it's not apples-to-apples and may, some people may not consider this a good thing, but we're giving tens of thousands of dollars to property owners in downtown Clearwater where we don't own the building, but we're giving them money to upgrade their buildings for businesses in downtown. And they're the ones that get the, they're the ones that are getting, we're the ones that are getting the benefit from this improved facility. So I just think the, you know, I think the right thing to do is give some consideration to, you know, we can establish a max number. I don't know what that number should be. We can discuss it, you know, and just hypothetically, I'll throw a number out there. Let's say, we want to say, even if it costs $4,000 or $5,000 to do it, we only want to give you reimbursement for $3,000 of your expense and we'll take it off your rent at $100 a month for over 30 months, something of that nature. That, I think, is the right thing to do. And I don't know, you know, we're not required to do any of this. I just, you know, to me, there's, you know, what's necessary and then there's also what's right.
Mr. Chesney?
Hearing what you say, the, the problem I see right now is we don't control the, the rent because we have a contract, a lease with the airpark. So if there were any rent reductions, it would be on that side. We collect rent through the, through the lease. You know, and I've thought about this because they, some of the tenants have asked about just what you're, you're recommending. And if, if there was anything we could do, you know, when we found out that these, these situations occurred, you know, we, we didn't have them come in and get these after-the-fact permit with double or triple rates, you know, which often like stop-work orders might do, you'd come in and you'd pay more than you normally would for your permit just to make it correct. So from the city side, I thought if there was anything we could do, maybe there would be no permit fees at the building department. You know, when we do our own projects, we don't charge ourselves building fees. So that, I thought, better than give them rents, discounting rents, maybe there was some relief there. And I don't know what, what, how that would work out.
Mr. Chesney, are their leases not month-to-month?
They are month-to-month.
So they don't have a 30-month lease?
Mm-hmm.
And they can, their lease can be terminated for cause or without cause at any time. So there is no guarantee that they would recoup that, those funds.
Okay. Well, that is, that's by the letter, you're, you're right. But we have, you're talking about, the people I know and the, and the tenants I'm talking about are tenants that have been there for eight, 10 years and have every intention of being there for eight or 10 more years.
Mr. Hamilton, here's where I have some problems with what you said. First off, we're not requiring them to keep those records. That's required by the federal government. They can do that at their home. They don't have to do it, I would imagine, you know, at the airpark. Secondly, you made a comment about, well, we're giving people in downtown, you know, grants, but that's for property that will hopefully be improved and we will get a larger tax revenue back from them. So it's not the same, you're not comparing the same types of grants. And then thirdly, I have a concern that it may not fit into our business plan for the airpark. And also, how many other people do we rent property to or use our property that they make improvements? And if they leave, we end up with those improvements, are they going to ask us for a reimbursement? So I, I think we're going down a path here. If we want to do this, you know, and make it every hangar has these improvements and charge, you know, an additional rent for every hangar to be that way, that's one thing. But, but to single out people, and I believe some of them have even moved into the hangar after the improvements were made. So who are you going to give the money back to?
Well, the improvements that were made are not up to code, so none of those improvements technically qualify because if they want to keep the improvement, they have to redo it up to present code.
Why don't we have staff, at Albert Whitted, they have something like this as part of the lease? Mr. Chesney?
This is a common problem at, at a lot of these, you know, non-FAA airports, that these improvements are made because it's the same scenario Albert Whitted, some of the smaller airparks where people have gone in and built these lounges. I don't know what everybody's done to, to make them legal, but when I took over at the airpark, you know, one of the first evictions we had was somebody that was building a shower and an office. So we gave them a stop-work order, told them they had to remove it, and they did not want to, so they were ultimately evicted and it was dismantled. Then some other things happened at the airport that really brought to light, you know, what are, what are really going on in these long-term leases that we have for decades? And it's been long rumored that these offices existed. So we went in and just did a survey of everything. We wanted to look at non-aircraft-related things going on. And I completely agree, these are, these are pilot lounges where they do their record-keeping and they're all also comfort areas where they can relax and, and enjoy in there. And we gave them the option, we had a big meeting and most everybody wanted to keep them. And they all agreed at that time. We said, if you didn't want them and you wanted to give up your hangar, the city would go in there and remove them. We weren't going to permit them on our own. Nobody wanted that. They all wanted to stay there. So at that time, everybody agreed that they would look into, get these improvements made. And then it further, it got better in that, in that fact that the airpark operator, the FBO operator, he said, well, let's get a consultant out here. I'll put the first $1,000 in to get a contractor out here to see what everybody has. Some are better than others. There's no doubt about that. A lot of them were constructed by contractors and likely would pass code with some improvements, maybe firewall, fire doors, certain, certain things. So with that said, then these, these, these tenants all got together and hired one contractor to look at everybody. It would be easier for these applications to come in under the same engineer or the same contractor, do them all at the same time. It was easier for the building department, it was easier for the FBO. So maybe as that was going along, costs started to, to, to be known, what it would cost to develop these. I think that's where then people thought, this is going to be expensive for us to bring these up to code. That wasn't known at time zero when we, when we started this. So, so other, other than that, you know, we haven't changed anything, you know, we were moving forward with that. And now I think that costs are starting to, to surface and some of these people are, like everybody else, they don't want to pay to, to do this. But we committed to it and we started down that road. So that's why I offered, if there was anything the city could do, is maybe treat it like our own permitting process where we don't have those fees at the building department. But if they're looking for engineering fees and, you know, contractor fees, that I, I wouldn't be, you know, in favor of, but I do think we could, could do other things as far as inspections and, and permit fees. That would, that's what I, what I thought would be reasonable if we even wanted to do that.
Is that okay with y'all, for them to give us a report back after they do a little further?
I mean, I'm kind of in alignment a little bit with Hoyt, it stays with the city, but then I like your suggestion because we don't operate the airpark. The other thing I would say, isn't there still a long waiting list to, for tenants to get in the airpark?
Yeah, there is. It's, you know, another eight, 10 years of people on the list to get in there.
Yeah, so it's...
And that's, you know, that's another thing with, with doing, doing things at the airpark. We're looking at non-aircraft-related thing, uses. We have tenants that don't fly anymore, so they store their planes there or they don't have planes. So we have problems with that. We want to make the airpark, the airpark's only active and profitable when you use it. So if half the hangars are storage units, they're not flying, they're not buying gas, and then we have younger pilots that are coming online that can't get in, and, and that's a problem. And the older pilots, and I get it, they, they want to hang on to their, their glory days, but we have a lot of pilots that aren't flying anymore, but they're still interested in the airpark and want to be there and, and I get that.
Well, I think the minimum requirement, I think we should look at the whole thing, is that you have to have an airplane.
Well, we are, we're redoing the leases right now. Part of the airpark advisory board's task was to look at leases. So I got Albert Whitted's leases, I got some of the others, and we're going to, there's a lot of common ground. All these leases were developed years ago under some, you know, guidelines. So we're, we told the tenants, if you invested in permitting your hangars, bringing them up to code, we will give you a longer-term lease. We'll look at yearly leases rather than month-to-month. So they all liked that because right now it's a month-to-month lease. And those are odd when you're in there for a decade to have a month-to-month lease. We did it at the marina. We gave five-year leases because people were investing in boats and businesses and they, they couldn't operate or get loans on things for a month-to-month lease. So if somebody was going to buy an airplane and wanted to spend that kind of money on it and needed a place to keep it, you know, month-to-month is not a very assuring lease to have. Yes.
So I'm kind of looking at this from a different angle. I kind of had an experience with this where I went into a, something I was renting and I put money to remodel it, this was years ago. But instead of getting a reduction in rent, which they did, would not give it, all I wanted to do was be able to get my return on investment in time. So the longer lease seems like an option to say, okay, instead of month-to-month, hey, if you're going to put $3,000 or $5,000 into this thing and you're going to have a plane and you're thinking you're going to have it for five years, well, could you give me a five-year lease? That way I know I can get at least five years out of it, enjoying this thing. And then, you know, after that, I give it up and the next person can enjoy it. But no reduction in rent, but more of a time element related.
I mean, that's, that's another way to go about it. I'm just looking at, you know, giving, you know, consideration, giving consideration to the, to the cash outlay to do this. Because I fully, I mean, I would expect, I know it's not a requirement, but I think it's, you know, it would be appreciated that anytime you build another, if we build more hangars out at the airpark, when we build them, have, you know, have a small office space in the hangar itself. You know, I mean, when you're sitting, I mean, these people, a lot of them are retired, they have, and, and flying is a hobby and they like to spend a lot of time out at that airpark. June, July, August, September, in the heat and humidity we have, to be able to, you know, do the things they need to do and be able to, you know, get into a, a small space that's nice and cool for a little bit, makes all the sense in the world to me. So I just, I think it's a, you know, if, you know, a hangar with that amenity probably pulls more rent than a, than a hangar that doesn't have it in the long run. So...
Well, if I could add to that, you know, we've been building corporate hangars out there over the last couple of years and those have the amenities, the restrooms, the, the air conditioning in those spaces there. And they are more expensive for those types of planes. These are the T-hangers and we are building one, we, we, these are mostly new. We started rebuilding them in the 90s and we've built several over the last couple of years. We have one more hangar that we've already got the grant approved and it's going to be a mirror of the last one we did, which I'm not sure we can build it for the, for the grant money that we have. So if we started, you know, using that, looking at and adding offices, that would, you know, change the, the strategy of it or the pricing of it. And with these grants we get, the DOT pays 80% of these hangars. So, you know, we pay 20 cents to every dollar. So, so they have an interest in it too. So if we start building these, these hangars, you know, I just met with DOT out there yesterday. They did a tour. We're getting a big inspection next month. So we talked about the hangars and they saw the book that you all saw and looked at it and they were kind of surprised. They, they didn't comment necessarily on our, on our plan to permit these things, but they were interested in our security features that we're doing out there. We rode the perimeter with them. We showed them three fence locations that we eliminated access points. They looked at the, the guard shack that's going out there. So they were very impressed or just glad to see what was happening out at the airpark. But I, I have plans right now that engineering is working on to replace that final T-hanger identical to what's out there and it's not going to have any of the amenities. We don't have sewer out there, we don't have water, and that's a problem. This one, the new ones will have a restroom. We did start putting restrooms, not private restrooms, but for the 10 pilots that are in there. There'll be hang, on each end. But they're not equipped with water, the power, that the design of the power that goes there is just for minimal use. So when all these air conditioners and refrigerators and all this stuff, stuff comes online, it taxes the electricity and the things that are there. So that's where the fire department has a problem because people keep adding these things, extension cords and all these outlets everywhere for they're doing these, these things in there that the hangar wasn't designed for. So that's, that's the problem right now. We have these older hangars that were designed as open air, you open the door, it's hot out, everybody's got these big giant fans, the ones that don't have air conditioning and that, that's how it's been out there for years and years. And as things change, that's where these corporate hangars came online. But we're out of space now for any more new hangars. Alls we can do is replace old hangars. And the footprint of all those small hangars, they can't get any bigger. So we're basically replacing like for like and maybe, you know, upgrade to, certainly with power and some of those requirements as things change.
So we will adjourn our work session and remind everybody that our meeting is tomorrow, Thursday night at 6:00. Thank you very much. You'll keep working on that then.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. We've got to come back.
Yeah, after a while, more conversation.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.